Any council members, are you guys ready? Councilwoman Sanchez. Good afternoon. I call to order the closed session meeting of the Mayor and City Council at 4:03 PM. Welcome and thanks for being here and thanks to those viewing remotely. Madam City Clerk, please call the row.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra will not be present tonight. Mayor Potem will not be present tonight. They are in attendance at a conference. Councilmember Charette?
Here.
Councilmember Canas has not yet arrived. Councilmember Flores?
Present.
And Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
And Mayor Tran.
Here, thank you. Moving on to public comments for closed session. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No, we have no public comments.
Thank you. We will now convene into closed session at 4:04 PM. Madam City Clerk, the City Attorney, do we have any comments?
Yes, Mayor Tran. Just to let you know, one of the two cases for significant exposures related to Mandeville, as we've been discussing, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome and thank you for being here and thanks to those viewing remotely. I call to order this joint regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council and the Mayor and City Council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of San Bernardino, the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority at 5:00 PM. Madam City Clerk, please call the row.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra and Mayor Potem will be attending a conference and not in attendance today. Councilmember Charette?
Here.
Councilmember Canas?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
And Mayor Tran?
Here, thank you. We will now move on to invocation and pledge. We have Pastor Dr. Rich Hall from the Rock Church will lead tonight's invocation. Please approach the podium at this time. And Councilwoman Flores, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Please all rise.
Let's pray together. Gracious Heavenly Father, thank you for the city of San Bernardino that we love so much. Thank you, Lord, for this council and just any way that it's possible just to serve them and support them. And dear God, tonight, we bring this council before you. We bring Mayor Helen Tran before you and each important council member. And God, you would give them wisdom and unity together. And Lord, we just pray that like the people of Isikar mentioned in the Bible, the leadership that they, it says that they understood the times and they knew what to do. And I pray that that would be the case here with our council and leadership here in San Bernardino. Be with our city, help it financially, keep it safe. We ask, God, you'd be with law enforcement, firefighters, all the safety people and others that work for our safety, that you'd protect them. And Lord, be in this meeting tonight, God, that your special presence would reside here. And we ask this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Dr. Rich Hall and thank you Councilwoman Flores. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report from closed session?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Of the four items listed under closed session on this agenda, there is only one reportable item. It is related to the case Meritellis Camea versus the City of San Bernardino. The mayor and council unanimously approved a settlement of $250,000. The motion was made by Councilwoman Sanchez. It was seconded by Councilwoman Ortiz. And like I mentioned, it was a unanimous vote to approve that settlement. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We will now move on to presentation. We do have one presentation. It is the proclamation for Small Business Saturday in the City of San Bernardino, November 29th, 2025. We have several business folks who are here joining us. Please, if you hear your name, please join us on stage. Council will join me onstage with you. We have Elliot's Pet Emporium, Spine &amp; Shine Nursery, and Layman's Candy Company. Please all come upstage. Council, would you join me? All right. A proclamation of the Mayor and City Council proclaiming November 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday in the City of San Bernardino. Whereas small businesses are the backbone of San Bernardino's economy, providing jobs, unique goods and services, and vital investments that strengthen our neighborhoods. And whereas locally owned enterprises help keep dollars in our community, support local nonprofits and schools, and reflect the creativity and diversity of San Bernardino. And whereas Small Business Saturday, observed annually on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, encourages residents to shop and dine locally during the holiday season and throughout the year. And whereas the City of San Bernardino recognizes the importance of supporting small businesses to foster entrepreneurship, expand opportunity, and build a resilient local economy. And whereas residents, visitors, and businesses are encouraged to participate by shopping, dining, and doing business with the San Bernardino Small Business and Independent Establishments on this day and beyond. Therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of San Bernardino do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday in the City of San Bernardino. We encourage all residents to visit local shops, dine at our neighborhood restaurants, and support the small businesses that you make our city, that make our city unique. Together, we can strengthen our local economy and foster a sense of community. Presented on the 19th day of November 2025, and as you can see, we have several handful of small businesses in our state that we want to recognize. So, thank you so much. And would you like to say a few words? And who you are and what you do?
Sure. I'm Heather and this is my father, Tim, and we're the owners of Layman Candy. Thank you. Just a quick little backstory. I'm the fourth generation. We've been in business for 98 years. My dad is third generation, is my great-grandfather who started this business. And we're just proud to be part of this community. Please come in and visit us in our retail store, buy candy for the holidays. We have over 2,000 items, so I'm sure we have what you want. And thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Angie Simon. I'm the manager over at Elliot's Pet Emporium down on East Street in San Bernardino. I have my co-managers Maria Munoz and Nicholas Maxi with me today. They've been there for about 10 years. I've been over 35 years at the store. The business has been there, I think closer to 50 with a previous owner. We do strive to try to have our best customer service for people with their pets and want to come in and get everything they need. So, we are definitely there for you for Small Business Saturday. We have a great promotion coming up and we hope everyone will come in.
Do we have everyone here? Okay.
Yeah, this is someone who didn't come.
Oh, no. So, just two? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, we have two of you. So, we have sweets for your holidays and then we have a place to take care of your fur babies. Big round of applause for our small business folks. Again, friendly reminder, don't forget to shop local, okay, everyone? All right. Moving on to public hearing. Item number two, continuation of September 17th, 2025, public hearing, public hearing closed to adopt resolution denying or approving Appeal 24-06, a planning commission's approval of Resolution 2024-034-PC that restored the conditions of approval for administrative development permit 22-020. The public hearing was closed on September 17th, 2025, and no additional testimonies will be heard. Do we have any discussion or comments from the council? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. In reviewing all of this information, and it is unfortunate that the parties weren't able to come back with a middle ground decision. Based on the fact that the appeal to the appeal wasn't properly filed with the city within the 15-day time period as per our municipal code and requirements, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution 2025-353 approving the appeal for Odessa.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you, Council. There's a motion and second. Madam City Clerk? Councilwoman, please vote on your digital screen.
The motion passes unanimously?
Can you correct the motion was motioned by Councilwoman Ortiz and seconded by Councilwoman Canas? Because the screen says, okay. Thank you.
And I'll go ahead and read the motion. So, the motion is to adopt Resolution 2025-353 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California approving Appeal 24-06 thereby overturning the planning commission's approval of Appeal 24-05 regarding conditions of approval 20 through 26 that were redacted through the Community Development and Housing Department's approval of amendment to conditions of approval 23-01, originally drafted for administrative development permit 22-020 for the property located at 379 East Industrial Road on .83 acres, APN number 0141-581-03 within the industrial light zone, Ward 3.
Thank you. Did you note that it was already approved, right? Okay. That it was approved unanimously, right? To you, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Council. We will now move on to City Manager update. Mr. City Manager, please proceed with the City Manager's report.
Yes, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. The San Bernardino community came together on November 8th to honor its veterans in a Veterans Day celebration and resource fair at the Court Street Square. The ceremony included the recognition of four hometown heroes and issuance of commemorative challenge coins to all veterans in attendance. It was a great event for all. Four San Bernardino businesses were finalists last night at Cal State San Bernardino's 23rd Annual Spirit of the Entrepreneur Awards. Raymond Moorhead and Jacob Estrada from Blue Core Minerals, Marisol Hill of Adventure RV, California, Jennifer Carter of Oak Tree Learning Center, and Gwen Doughty Rogers of Arrowhead United Way were selected for their excellence from a pool of over 300 nominees of entrepreneurs from San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. In October, 170 new companies doing businesses in San Bernardino obtained business licenses. In the past two weeks, the city participated in the following ribbon cuttings. Our Brew on Del Rosa relocated to San Bernardino and became our first brewery. Zindejas Tacos Modern Mex on Waterman Avenue was opened by a family known for good food and kicking in the NFL. Elite Competitive Training ECT Gym on East Street celebrated their opening with a ribbon cutting in partnership with the IE Black Chamber. And congratulations to all those businesses. Public Works is partnering with Caltrans and SCAG to identify potential improvements to Waterman Avenue, State Route 18. Community input is being requested over the next several months on existing conditions, key concerns, and potential improvements. Responses will help identify priorities and improvements that reflect the community's needs and vision. To participate in English or Spanish, please visit the city's website. My congratulations goes out to the Garcia Center for the Arts, who last week celebrated their 10th anniversary in San Bernardino. For a decade, the center's mission has been to sponsor, promote, and sustain the arts in San Bernardino and has offered diverse programming, including art classes, exhibitions, and performance events as a location on 11th Street. The center will be holding a community celebration on December 19th. We have over 80 volunteers for next week's Thanksgiving for the animals at the San Bernardino Animal Shelter scheduled for Wednesday, November 26th. The annual event not only serves a special warm meal for the shelter animals, it helps bring awareness to the amazing pets available for adoption. While volunteer space is full, the shelter will be holding a free adoption event that day and seeking donations of blankets for animals staying at the shelter. Celebrate the holiday season at 5:00 PM on Thursday, December 4th, for the annual lighting of the city Christmas tree at City Hall. The event will kick off a festive December with the annual downtown miracle on Court Street running from December 10th through 22nd, featuring free photos with Santa on ice skating rink, and ice skating rink musical performances and hot cocoa. The Ho Ho Parade will make its way through the streets of San Bernardino December 8th. And the YMCA Children's Christmas Parade will take place on Saturday, December 13th. And then finally, sometimes we don't realize the impact some of our programs and employees have on our residents. We recently received a heartfelt letter from a mother whose two children have made, whose two children have made great strides in math as a result of our after-school tutoring program at Feldheim Library. Thank you to library staffers Xavier Madrid and Anahi Campos for making such a difference for San Bernardino parent Cassandra Castro and her kids. And with that, that's my report for the night.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Yes, Councilwoman Charette?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question on the Waterman thing. That'll be, that's quite important to the community. Is that, are we looking to go from the freeway to the mountains? From the 10 to the, to the, all the way up? Or are we looking at more? And I, and this is probably answered on the website, but I'd like some clarity and, and also to kind of just follow up and say how important it is that we do get some input on this because that's such an important corridor for our community. So, Azam, whatever you can add to that?
Very important to the community. It expands, it starts at 30th and goes all the way to past 40th, all the way to a road called Arrowhead Road. Yesterday, we did a walk audit, basically with community members and the school principal at the intersection of Parkdale and Waterman. And we walked all the way to Parkdale evaluating certain deficiencies within the roadway spanning from sidewalk, ADA ramps, potholes, lighting, traffic signals, and so forth. And then SCAG will come back in the spring of 2026 with additional, requesting additional input from the community through a virtual meeting in the spring of 2025.
So, it's basically from the 210 freeway north?
Yes.
Up to, up to the mountains or up to Highway 18? Okay, great. And that's, of course, a very important corridor because so many people travel it that are going through our town. And what they see is not real, real great at the present time. And so, we'd like to beautify that as much as we can throughout the city, but that corridor particularly because people do, they come into San Bernardino going up to the mountains, skiing, or just for whatever reason. And that image is very important. So, that's great. Great news. And I appreciate the clarification that it's not the entire, that would, that'd be monumental.
Yeah. I just want to make it clear, this is a planning grant.
Right.
It's not an implementation. So, based on the results, what we can do is package the planning grant, applying for a grant.
Great.
For implementation, design, and construction.
All right. Great. Thank you very much to both of you and to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That was great, great questions and comments. And I just want to add that if staff could really make sure that we reach out, push this in social media to get engagement from the public input, neighborhood associations, businesses in those corridors, that we're actively really engaging with folks to get the feedback that we need. So, that would be very helpful.
Will do, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for that. We would now move on to public comments. At this time, public comments will be heard for items on the open session and items not on the agenda. To address the City Council, everyone must complete a speaker card and provide it to the City Clerk. Those, only those speaker cards turned into the City Clerk will be allowed to address the City Council. No late cards will be accepted. Each person should state their name for the record before beginning their comments. As your name is called, please approach the podium. There are two podiums for, available for your convenience. Please note, your name will only be called once. If you do not respond when called, you may forfeit your opportunity to speak. If you require Spanish interpretation, we do have an interpreter on site. Please raise your hand at this time to indicate if you need interpreting assistance. In addition, we do have interpreting listening devices available in the back. We also ask that you please observe a proper decorum and do not speak out of turn or make comments from your seat. If you wish to address the Mayor and City Council, please be sure to submit a speaker slip. If you speak out of turn or disrupt the meeting, a warning may be given and/or you will be asked to leave the meeting pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.9 and Penal Code 403. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the speakers?
Al Palavo, Mike Hartley, Eric Marquez, Georgia L., Joe Solis, Jim Smith, Ronika Galande, Dolores Armstead, Bernice Altamano, Stephanie Liggins, Charles Burge.
Mayor, a council member, city manager. In nineteen eighty, I wrote down as many ideas I could on one sheet of paper to rebuild San Bernardino. Nineteen eighty. In nineteen ninety-four, I took this paper to the redevelopment agency. Both times, the city government ignored my ideas. Other cities, over the decades, have taken these ideas in this county. I decided to meet with my friend Senator Ruben Ayala. He was so impressed, he immediately set up a meeting with the executives of Caltrans. He said, "Al, I hope it isn't too late." Caltrans priority was a massive parking structure in the most central block in downtown at Fourth and E. Actually, that parking structure was built for another state office building that will never be built. This will bring... Caltrans killed the opportunity for any of the ideas in this paper to revitalize downtown economically beyond an office building. When the city hall is renovated, I want to see an enclosed atrium in the front where the pillars are and an open atrium at the top of the stairs. The parking lot between the city hall and Court Street should be like the California Plaza in downtown LA in the financial district. That's what inspired me fifty years ago. This will bring live people and businesses, shops, and restaurants. The original plan, if you go back to the redevelopment books put together by Warner Hagen, intended a green oasis with a small pond. I would like to see cherry blossom trees like Washington, DC. I am not talking about a decoration. This is the most key central space. The entire downtown is within two blocks radius. I am planting the seeds to serve as a focal point to bring people day and night, a magnet to bring back the downtown beyond just office buildings where people come at eight and leave at five. And people complain, "Why aren't we like Riverside?" or Claremont, or Redlands. Nineteen eighty, I wrote the paper. Ninety-four, you have received the paper. Many city managers have. But when you're nobody, nobody listens to you. But I do have friends, and Senator Ayala was gracious. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Helen Tran, council members and fellow residents. My name is Bernice Altamirano. I'm a first-time homeowner in the second ward. I was gonna, Ms. Ivara is my ward, so I just want, I plan to speak directly to her. So, our streets are dark and poorly lit. It doesn't feel safe to walk outside at night. Trash builds up, and the sidewalks and roads look neglected. This doesn't reflect the city that's focused on beautification. As a homeowner who takes pride in my property, I want to see the same pride reflected in the city's efforts. And when it comes to new businesses, I have to ask what's being done to bring them in. Since I lived here, I haven't seen much effort to attract or support new business growth, especially along Highland Avenue. That area has so much potential, yet it continues to decline. The homelessness crisis continues to grow right in front of us. It's heartbreaking, and it's also hurting our local economy. Businesses can thrive when the environment around them feels unsafe or neglected. You've spoken about setting higher standards for our city, and I completely agree, but we need to see that action in our ward. I'm asking you to stand by those standards and deliver visible change that truly makes San Bernardino a better place to live, work, and raise our families. I also want to address public, public safety in my neighborhood. I've made several calls requesting more police patrolling in my area, and even after a recent shooting that involved a minor, nothing was done. I'm doing my part as a resident. I'm calling, I'm reporting, I'm using the resources available, but, but we're not seeing any responses or results. That's very frustrating and discouraging for residents who are trying to make a difference. I'd like to bring attention to the shared parking lot between the YMCA and Paris Hill Park. It's very poorly lit, and it becomes extremely dark at night, which creates safety concerns for children and families who use these facilities. The YMCA has already tried reaching out to the city, but there's no response. I kindly request the lighting improvements be reviewed so our community can feel safe using this space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello. I'm very happy today because, oh wait, sorry again, my name's Eric Marquez, and sorry for missing last council meeting. I did not mean to do that. And I have great news. Everyone on the dais, the city council mayor, except for Fred, Freddie, and Teddy Bear. Also, the reason why I call him Teddy Bear is because of the bear Theodore Roosevelt didn't kill in front of its mother. Wait, no, I'll tell you about that later. He killed a mama bear, and one of his hunting buddies was watching him just not kill the baby that was right there left orphaned. And that's where the term Teddy Bear comes from, and that's why I use it for Teddy. But, six out of eight of you showed up to my garden, and it makes me feel oh so special that Teddy and Freddie are the only ones who didn't show up, even though I had an open invitation. I'm just so happy because that's literally what I expected. Sorry, sometimes I can't control my smiling unless I have my hand on my face. And so, I told this story about Teddy, Theodore Roosevelt, and my dinner party, December fourth. If I, five PM to seven, dinner will be started at six, but will probably end around eight. And Uno, that's a great game. Who doesn't love Uno? And if, for everyone who's invited, you know, text me for the address. I would really appreciate RSVP-ing, and if he can't come, I get it. I also made invitations so that way everyone who can't show up can feel special still. I forgot them, though, today. I mean, I'm just disappointed. Oh, also, another thing. Teddy's Commissioner on Parks and Rec hasn't showed up for over three months, so I'm wondering when he's going to remove her? Or the council? Or whoever? I'm just so happy today. I mean, I also got lemongrass, which Scott loves. And Scott's going after me eventually, and he's here. We share the garden plot, by the way. And I've been trying to gain weight. I've always wanted to be three hundred pounds. And my cat's fine, my garn's okay, and that's pretty much everything for me, but I'm going to keep wasting time because I can. I still have an espresso machine that makes great hot chocolate. And out of all the days, I can't ramble. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Yes, James Smith, Chairman of the Arts and Historical Preservation Commission, city manager, honorable mayor, and city council people. I wanted to talk about three or four things tonight. First of all, I want to thank Lynn Merrill for making an excellent presentation to my commission last Monday about a survey about the historical sites in the city of San Bernardino. I'm going to be talking to our, to the president of Arrowhead Poll Number One Ten, and we will be involved in that and work directly with him to identify areas that we need to preserve here in San Bernardino. Again, I want to thank him for the work he's doing for the city of San Bernardino. What concerned me this last week, I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force, and San Bernardino was one of the few cities didn't, did not observe Veterans Day on Veterans Day. And I'm going to give you my strong feelings about that. Whoever's on the council next Veterans Day, I hope that we schedule some type of ceremony. Doesn't have to be a parade, but I think we should honor our veterans on Veterans Day. Not, all due respect, and I'm, I'm not being critical, but I think it should happen on Veterans Day. I saw so many posts on Facebook about activities that were happening on Veterans Day, but there was nothing in San Bernardino that day. So, I give you a charge to consider that seriously for Veterans Day next year. As a veteran, thank you so much. I also think you should reinstate the city charter review committee. That is not active right now. My good friend, prominent attorney, Tim Prince, was the chairman of that committee. He said he'd be more than happy to work with whoever would like to work with him to review the city charter, because I think we need to always be very active in looking at that. Last of all, and I may go a little over, but I wanted to remember Deputy San Diego County Sheriff Andrew Nunez, who was killed in the line of duty this last week.
Thank you.
He left a pregnant wife and a daughter, and I'm sure you saw it on, on public media, but I think at some point during this meeting, we should observe-
Thank, yes.
-a time since he was in the San Diego County that we should observe a moment of silence in his memory.
Thank you, and we did do that last meeting. Jim, next, Madam City Clerk, can you call the other speakers?
Scott Olson, Shavette Scott, Nikki Deedman, Keith Benitez, Ulysses Benitez, Melina Enriquez, Les, Forenza Anderson Philpott.
Please state your name.
My name is Stephanie Liggins. Recognizing our illustrious mayor Helen Tran and the city council, good evening. I'm requesting that the strip of land on the west side of David Way be beautified. We started talking about this with the, the grant, "Love Your Block," and even though the, the plan was vetted, it was not fulfilled. I was informed yesterday to begin the process to beautify that strip of land, that a curb is needed. I was also told that in order for that process to begin, I must go through my city councilmen. Fred Charette, this is for you. We need a curb, and we need the road to be reinforced. It is disintegrating into the dirt. We're trying to beautify this city. I'm so grateful that the gateway to the mountains is being beautified, but don't forget David Way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Scott Olson. I'm a lifetime resident of San Bernardino, but I've traveled the country quite extensively. Tonight, I want to thank, echo Eric's thanks. The lemongrass is planted, and I hope it does well. Thank you, Mayor. And there's a lot of things in the city that just need more love. The tour of the garden was to highlight one of those things. You have an awesome garden there, run by City Parks. But you know, City Parks needs, they need help, and the stuff that they need help with comes from the council in how you structure things. Now, the beautification on Fortieth Street, long overdue and long needed. I grew up close to that area on the other side of the Wash, so I know that area well. One thing I also know, Fred, is you'd had how many years on city council? When you have a gateway with as many people traveling from the highway up the mountains and off to the west, you have this old-school business area that has suffered under your leadership from day one. Why, in this beautification plan, Fred, are you not triumph, trumpeting for the city, a digital billboard or even other billboards? You have Wildwood Park to help the city businesses, highlight them for everybody who comes up and down that mountain. I've never heard one word from you about doing a single thing to help the businesses with advertisement, and I've never seen it in my whole time living here, with you being here. You see, Fred, the public needs to know something about you, and I will rarely say thank you to James Malcolm Smith, but he made an excellent point. I was on the charter commission for a brief time. I quit going because it was a total waste. I was totally frustrated and disgusted with the way it was run. In the three times I was there, never had the charter out, never talked about the charter, never made a single motion on the board. In fact, I think basically charter committee, since you appointed your appointee, who was the reason for being that way. They said openly they wanted it gone. Commissions are the voice of the people. When you discourage commissions like Teddy and not having, paying attention to your commission members, the voice of the people loses. And Fred, we have an election coming up. Honestly, I'm going to encourage you right now, make it public. You are not running again. And the reason I say that is because I was here in city council when, when we had a recall of Wendy McCamick. No reference at all to treasure, but when Wendy was my city councilperson, she was awesome. She was a great help. She was there for the city and the people. Can't say that for you in many cases. Also, I was at a meeting, and I sat there. You didn't realize you had your back turned to me, but you were telling everybody you didn't want to run this time. I would strongly encourage you to take your own advice. You go after Wendy for twelve years. You've been here a lot longer than twelve years, and she has a lot more to show for you than you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, Dolores Armstead, and don't worry, I'm not going to put a hex on you today. Actually, I want to start tonight with an apology. At the last council meeting, I let my emotions and passions get the best of me. The cleanup of Oxbow is a project that I have been fighting for more than five years, and your continued disrespect and dismissal of the community and the potential harm to their health just pushed me past my breaking point. With that said, I am sorry because I don't want harm to come to your family. What I was really trying to relay is a message of you reap what you sow. None of you are moved from the consequences of your votes. Nothing in the city is happening in a vacuum and only affecting some. We are one city, and what hurts one hurts all. That's what I want to relay, and that's what I want the council to understand. We, the residents, are directly affected by your decisions, and we want you to care about us and make decisions on our behalf the way you would for your family and your children. We live here, too. All we have ever asked is for those who we elect to show up for us, not the developers, the PACs, or the special interests, the people of San Bernardino who live with every decision that you make. So, again, I apologize, but it hurts when we see you take no action or taking action for the developers. It hurts, and we are impacted. Next, city hall. What's the status? We want a city hall. We are the seat of the county, and we don't have a city hall. That's embarrassing. How can you be proud to be the seat of the county, and we don't have a city hall? And again, over the last month, during October, the city, there were a couple of events, a rave and some other events, at the Orange Show. For all those people, there's no restaurants or any place for them to go to. They have to go to other cities. They have to go to other cities to enjoy a good meal or a drink or hang out. Why? That's sad. We are the seat of the county, and we have nothing to show. All the other cities are progressing. They have commercial, retail, professional. What do we got? Nothing. We are the city of the county, and no city hall, no restaurants. We keep making the worst city list. Aren't you embarrassed? It hurts when I hear that. It hurts because I love my city. People, you voted for this. The saga of San Bernardino continues. We deserve better. You want good for your family. We want good for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, I'm Keith Benitez. I'm here on behalf of the San Bernardino County Youth Advisory Board, and I'm here in favor of item number 17, the discussion to of the the members of the Bridge Committee. I was informed of this a few days ago, and I think it's a wonderful idea, reestablishing the city's youth civic engagement council. I'm with the San Bernardino County Youth Advisory Board. I've been with the Youth Advisory Board since I moved to San Bernardino in July of 2021, and I joined April 2022. I was only in this city for barely a few months, and I love it there. The county's Youth Advisory Board is amazing. I've met some of the most wonderful people and some of my greatest friends, and I think this is an amazing opportunity for students to engage in council. It's an internship for them to learn these these, how to understand this whole thing. I can't describe it in words, but being in being the Youth Advisory Board, I've grown. I've grown a lot. And seeing youth younger than me in the positions I was, struggling to find their place, struggling to have their voice. For the majority of my life, I have been isolated because of things completely out of my control. And I see more youth my age or younger, especially younger, kids who need places to be. And I feel this civic engagement council is gonna be that, giving students the opportunities to understand how this city operates and have their input. A lot of people my age or younger were very pessimistic because we grew up seeing how much our world is just crumbling. And knowing there would be a place where their voices are heard, I think that's amazing because when I was growing up, I didn't have anywhere. I grew up in a middle-of-nowhere desert town where the majority of the population were elderly. If I had something like this, that my city would listen to me because my voice would matter, I can say without a shadow of a doubt that that part of my life would have been completely different. I have family that are in the San Bernardino School District at the moment, and I see every day just how not great it is. I really believe allowing them the opportunities to work with you, intern with you, learn that their voice can matter, it'll be one of the greatest changes and one of the greatest opportunities for youth in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nikki Dittman. I'm the chief executive officer of the Making Hope Happen Foundation. I'm here tonight to speak on item 17, which is about the discussion of the youth civic engagement council. The Making Hope Happen Foundation strongly supports and encourages the city to discuss the reformation of the city's youth engagement council through the Bridge Committee. This partnership between the city of San Bernardino and the San Bernardino City Unified School District is a vital step towards improving student outcomes and strengthening collaboration among schools, families, and engage in community partners. The Making Hope Happen Foundation, our mission is to support the students and families of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, and our vision is to transform the future of San Bernardino through inclusion-focused investments in education, youth development, and community empowerment. The youth civic engagement council aligns powerfully with emerging statewide efforts, such as those led by the California Association of Youth Commissions, which recognizes the transformative impact of youth involvement in local government. It is important to have youth empowered, to amplify their voices in policymaking, which ensures that youth commissions have the resources and support needed to thrive. These goals highlight the importance of connecting local commissions, sharing best practices, and addressing barriers that may prevent communities, especially those facing high poverty rates and limited resources, from establishing youth leadership structures. By supporting the youth civic engagement council, the city of San Bernardino would join a broader movement committed to expanding civic participation, reducing disparities in youth representation, and really shaping a stronger future through youth-driven insights. This initiative represents an important opportunity for our city to ensure that young people are not only heard, but are active partners in building community solutions. We commend Councilmember Ortiz for bringing this item forward, and the Making Hope Happen Foundation looks forward to supporting those efforts that uplift youth voices, strengthen partnerships, and advance equitable opportunities for all young people in San Bernardino. And we look forward to partnering with you in the school district as this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, my name's Ulysses Benitez, and I would just like to say, I hope everybody's been having a good day, and I hope everybody on the board has been having a good year so far. And I just want to say that once I heard that Treasure Ortiz was leading or was trying to bring back youth civic engagement, and I just want to say, you know, thanks for bringing, you know, like the young minds into the discussion. Because like Keith said before, where we used to live, it wasn't big on young minds. They felt like they shouldn't have a say. But once we came here, we found resources. We never realized how big of an opportunity that we had. So thank you, and you guys have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, city leaders. My name is Shazette Scott, and I am representing Family Assistance Program. We are the largest social service provider in San Bernardino County. November is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, a time to reflect on the challenges faced by families in need and to take action. As we approach Thanksgiving, our Family Assistance Program reminds us that housing and employment are not just basic needs. They are the foundation for stability and dignity. That's why we're excited about the upcoming Housing and Employment Needs and Solutions Summit that is being held by Family Assistance Program, where community leaders will come together to share strategies that create real opportunities for families. And on December 11th, we'll celebrate those making a difference at the Community Champions Award. These events highlight the power of collaboration and compassion. Together, we can ensure that every family has a safe place to call home and a pathway to economic security. I invite you, and I thank you for being a part of our mission.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello again. My name is Melina Enriquez. I am here representing Family Assistance Program and the Youth Advisory Board. So I am speaking again in the same side as my peers in saying that with the city, with the city's youth civic engagement council, the city gives opportunity to youth to be leaders. A similar group would be YAB, Y-A-B, stands for the Youth Advisory Board. As many of you may not know, the YAB is a coalition of hearts working towards advocating for youth homelessness. While I acknowledge that our missions as individual groups would be different, we can always work together. With this group coming in and allowing these students to have a space to be leaders in our community, such as yourselves and such as us, it would give us a great opportunity to work together. If there would ever be any interest in working together, our doors are open. Our doors and our arms are always open.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
John Schellenberger, Seventh Ward, city of San Bernardino. I'm going to speak to the community tonight at large. Throughout the years that I've been coming here and giving public comments and being in the audience here, I've heard many people, be it either the animal rights folks or anybody coming up here, to speak on certain things that they want for themselves or their city or from their council people. It's always, why am I coming up here and doing any of this when they've already pre-made decisions up here anyway? It's falling on deaf ears. Don't take that approach. Every single time you come up to this podium as a constituent and a citizen and a taxpayer in this city, you are making your voice heard. It is on public record. You are going on public record. And if they make decisions, like we've seen with Montoya and everything else that's gone on here, when the bigger picture comes together, and let's, you know, let's exaggerate a little bit, like Sacramento, let's say they get involved in this. We've been hearing from citizens of San Bernardino, X, Y, and Z is going on down there. Why is it going on down there? The community told you not to do this and not to do that, and you did it anyway. You throttled the will of the people and did what you wanted to do. How are they gonna, how are they gonna dispute that? So every single time you come up here and make your voice heard, we're the bosses. We're the, we're the, we're the community. It's up to us to continue. Don't grow tired. And not only that, make sure to have your friends come with you. The more voices heard, the better. Because it is, it's all about accountability. We're accountable for the things we do as a community, and so are our elected officials. And Dr. Ortiz, I can't tell you how proud I am of you. Words can't express it. You're a true leader, and these young people are inspired by your leadership. That's evident. It's just, I was thrilled when you became our leader in the Seventh Ward. I've seen more in 10 months out of you in 17 years than I've seen any other councilperson do. And anybody that wants to sit and dispute that, I'll be able to sit down with them. When I went formally for a streetlight on my street, oh, there's no money for that. Go find the money for that. You're a councilperson. Go, go to a county person and try to partner with them and get some money. Okay? But the point of the matter is, you know what? Treasure just lets the people do their job. Just, hey, that's it. We're gonna, we're gonna get things done, but we're gonna do it together collectively. I am indeed proud to be your constituent. I stand beside you 100%. You're a truth teller. And I'm, again, I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Florenza Anderson Philpott, and I'm a resident and educator in this city. And one of the classes that I teach is Intro to Ethnic Studies. One of the current topics that we are focusing on is environmental justice. And one of the most specific topics important to my students right now, who are ninth through 12th graders in high school, of course, is the air quality, the warehouses, the trucks, the constant issues with asthma, respiratory concerns. And this is coming from high school students who are doing their own research and who are reading about, yes, we are located near Long Beach, and there's justification for us being the IE and having spaces. But then the question always arises, but why does it have to happen in our neighborhoods? And then we look up information on how marginalized communities are chosen and are, they are considered and chosen on a regular basis for these spaces. Now, we know that there's an issue, and we know that on a broader scale, companies choose these spaces because they're not welcomed in more affluent communities. And so we see our community as an affluent community because this is our community, right? But the decisions that are being made on a consistent basis here make us feel like as citizens and make my students feel like that you guys see our community as a marginalized community like those out there. Because constant, consistently, we see decisions being made that choose profit, that choose friendships, that choose business over the people. And that's what big companies do, and that's why they choose marginalized communities. So on tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of my students who cannot be here and who see this issue in our community as an environmental injustice and who want to speak up for the environmental injustices consistently put into our communities on a regular basis by choosing profit, by choosing more and more warehouses to come into our community. We just said we want to celebrate Small Business Saturday. So let's put money and energy into those small businesses instead of always choosing a warehouse because it has pretty lawn. The pretty landscape is doing nothing in comparison to the air quality. You're coughing, Mayor Tran. Part of that is because of the air quality in San Bernardino. And part of that issue is because San Bernardino is consistently chosen for warehouses and trucks to come through. Several meetings ago, there was an issue about trucks parking in places that they should not be parked at, making it difficult for even autistic adults to get services. And there was a discussion saying, how can we help both parties? I choose the party of the people every day, any day, over the quality of making sure that a big business is getting their funds, and especially a big business that couldn't even speak English to understand the contract initially. So on tonight, when we come forth, close sessions or any other sessions, I encourage you to find a plan, work together, don't push your own agendas, and don't push the money agenda that is being pushed to you behind closed doors and discussed before you get to a meeting, but push the agenda of the people. Your children need you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Joe Salas, Fourth Ward. Very quickly, just a community announcement, and I saw many councilmembers at the last one, but I believe there's been a date change for the cleanup sponsored by Downtown Neighborhood Association, Ray Bloom and the Wade Church. I think it's gonna be on the 29th, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And that's one more to be thankful for than cleaning up our beautiful town with your neighbors and your fellow church members or house of worship, wherever you may be. On another note, yesterday, last meeting, I had a lengthy statement, and but I wanted to readdress the issue of short-term rentals and the idea of parking districts within the city. Up on Skylark and Ezra Ten, there, that neighborhood is a very complicated area when it comes to fire safety. If Public Works can get up there and, again, paint the sidewalks red, it's already marked no parking, but I think what would add an extra layer of safety for those residents is a parking district. At the town hall meeting we had a few weeks ago at the San Bernardino Police Department, thank Chief for hosting that, Lieutenant Plummer said there is one parking district within the city, and that's at the top of Ridgeline, that straight where we, the house that we can see from in every direction on the top of Little Mountain. Those residents, from what I understand, though, it took them about two or three years working with the city to get a parking district for those residents. It would add an extra layer of safety. Anyone who's not parking there, who doesn't have a decal, would allow PD to automatically ticket those, and you can give extra passes to, you know, when you have friends and family over for the holidays or whatever event you might be celebrating at your house if you have extra visitors. So it doesn't stop the residents who live within that area. So I really think that's necessary, and also to specifically look at short-term rentals within fire danger zones. Because we know in our city that we have many of the beautiful foothills where we have homes. That's where I have one of my houses, the house that I live in. And there's extra added fire danger when there's congested streets and our fire trucks have accessibility issues with extra parking on the streets. On a somber issue, on a somber note, recently, a dear friend of mine, and he's a friend of many people up on the dais in the community, our summonment, James Ramos, lost his mother. Her name was Mother Rowena Mo. I think she went by the name of Rena Ramos. Having lost my mother seven years ago, I can imagine what Mr. Ramos, his summonment, and his family are going through. It's one of the heaviest burdens any, any person can take, having lost their mother. So if the city council can close in her name, moment of silence, whatever you, however you may want to commemorate that, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Les. Re-election time is coming. I notice around this time that you guys do everything for us just to keep us happy. But then, once you guys get the seats, you guys give us, you guys ask a kiss. To my, to my Mexican family out there who's working hard every day, that just want to put their heads down and just work, salute to you guys for coming over here, trying to make a way. And to my Mexicans who voted for Trump that sent ICE after you guys. They want to be gringos, you know, it's the sellouts. We have in every race, we have sellouts, so they just sellouts. We need to boycott Elon Musk. Trump, best friend, is a child molester. We definitely need to get Trump out. Still no forensic audit. We need to do a forensic audit on Fred and Theodore. When, when are we going to do that, Helen Tran? You read a disclaimer at the beginning, and you're basically saying that we need to show you respect, but you guys don't show us respect. You guys cut our public comment time down. You guys cut off the Zoom public comment, and then you guys start these meetings so early that half of the people can't even come because we're still at work, you know, trying to make a way for our children. Theodore is still prostitutes in front of that elementary school in your ward right here. Jones's Elementary, just a couple blocks. Jones's Elementary, just a couple blocks, two, three blocks right here, prostitutes still walking in front of it. Police station is down the street. I think you guys need to work together and try to either hire two more police officers to put somebody on patrol and the other one inside the school, something. But those prostitutes need to leave. Prostitutes shouldn't be around no elementary school. What else? Oh, to the community, to the community right there by the Oxbow, you guys just need to do a class action lawsuit. Just call it a day, because they're not listening to you guys. They just push whatever, however you guys feel about the Oxbow, they push that to the side and said, we're still gonna grind. So go ahead and do your class action lawsuit and call it a day. What else? Oh, when are we gonna be informed about the Carousel Mall? You guys still haven't told us anything about the Carousel Mall. Is it gonna come back? Are we gonna build some? Are we gonna build housing? So, you know, you guys still haven't told us anything about that. That's it.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
There are no more speakers. That concludes the public comments.
Thank you. Thank you for all the public comments. Moving on to consent calendar, items 3 to 15. Mr. City Manager, do you have any items to be pulled from the consent?
Madam Mayor, could you pull, could we pull item number 6 to move it to December 3rd?
Thank you. Item number 6 will be pulled from consent. Proceeding manager, be moved to the next meeting, December 3rd. Is it the 3rd? I believe. Councilmember Canas, any pulls?
Yes, can we please pull item number 7?
7, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
No pulls.
No pulls?
No pulls.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Flores?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Charette?
No, I moved the balance.
Thank you, Councilmember Charette. There's a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez? Please vote digitally.
The consent calendar balance passes unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmember Canas, item number 7?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I just, I pull this item because I want to ensure that as a collective council body, we find a little bit more role clarity and alignment. Also, just wanting to take in consideration, I know some of the public commenters have mentioned it also, just some fiscal prudency. One thing that I wanted to note in regards to, sorry, regards to role clarity is how the mayor's position was listed previously on our website. And I think that might be steering you in a way that is operating maybe independently in how you operate as a mayor of the city and not actively aligned with the charter. So one thing that was mentioned, and I just want to read this for the public, is the mayor is responsible for both the management and operation of the city. So you are asking to attend a conference, and that conference specifically is the International City Council Management Association. Now, to my understanding, the role of the mayor is a spokesperson of our city. I remember you went to the Verdunmont Neighborhood Association meeting, you had an item printed out, and I fully agree with you. You are the spokesperson, and I support you. This is a pre-approved budget, and the council unanimously supported our mayor. I did choose to abstain from that vote, only because of the familiar relationship. It was a vote to increase the salary for my sister, so I, in good faith, could not do that. But I do support you and your efforts and your role as the mayor of this city. But again, I just want to make sure that we do have some role clarity, because you're not the manager of the city. That's a role for our city manager that we just recently appointed. Now, it might be typical in other cities for city managers to approve this. I don't know why. I don't know. Maybe you can kind of opine and add to that. But just for the sake also of fiscal prudency, because as many have alluded to, we have many items in this city. I think we do have to start really tightening the belt. I know you mentioned you were very proud of the budget, and I respect that. For me personally, having to ask every department to cut their budget by 5% isn't something I can be proud of. And the only thing is, all budgets did get cut except yours. Again, we, the council unanimously approved an increase of double digits. So I am asking humbly if you could consider just the removal of a couple of these conferences that really aren't aligned with the mayor role. And I'm gonna go a little bit further. I think we all need to kind of tighten the belt. I've had, just even as of yesterday, some constituents complain about services that aren't being offered at our community centers. I myself have brought money into the city as a resident, getting donations for specific services to be added to our community centers. I have even cashed checks for reimbursements for travel that I have partaken on, just so that we can truly be fiscally prudent. So if the council is amenable to it, if we could just take off the International Council of Shopping Centers Conference, again, also in your thing, it said you oversee economic development. That's not a role that you play either. We don't even have an Economic Development Director. I think that we should focus on, really focusing on those positions, getting those filled. Also, again, as far as the International City County Management Association, I think that maybe we can forego that one as well. And then I would just move to approve the rest. I think those ones, such as especially U.S. Conference of Mayors, you do represent us for SBCTA, SCAG, the National League of Cities, as well as the League of California Cities, I think those are definitely appropriate and definitely within your scope as the spokesperson of this city. So if the council is amenable, I would like to go ahead and make a motion just to move the balance, the League of Cities and the ones that I listed, just taking off the International Council of Shopping Centers and the International City County Management Association. Thank you, Councilmember Canas. I could explain about the International City Managers Conference. When I first came on board, I was asked to speak at that conference as the mayor with the city manager, so that was the only time I attended, by the way. I did not attend any further conference for that, so that makes sense. So that was the only reason why it was on there, because I was invited to speak as the mayor and the relationship between the mayor and city manager. So that was the only reason why. As far as the international shopping, I believe that we all, as electeds, should go to that. I have not gone, just so you know. I am not intending to, I'm very mindful of the budget. I am not going to the U.S. Conference of Mayors. I am not attending to the National League of Cities. Just, again, being mindful of budget. So I do understand it's us just being representative of the city. So I am amenable to the ICMA being off, because, again, I'm not the city manager, and I recognize that role. The website should be updated, and staff needs to look at that, please, per, to correct the further charter. That was probably prior to me. So that needs to be updated. I don't manage the website, so we need to make sure staff is looking at all across the board that information is accurate per the current charter. So that would be my comment. Councilmember Ortiz?
Yeah, no, I attended ICSC last year, and I think it's extremely, and I was the only council member there. There were a bunch of other cities with other council members, and what it helps is for us to be a part of that economic development thing. And so I would, I agree with taking off the ICMA. And because I think too, like, right now, we have two council members that are attending in Salt Lake, and most of us didn't go. And so I think, I understand your point with ICMA, but I think everything else, when we can take opportunities, one of the biggest things in attending this stuff, San Bernardino really is never at the table the way that we are now. And so a part of, I think, our representation is making sure that we're driving our goals and objectives as we prepare for our strategies next year. And so I'd like to make, see if you would amend or make a substitute motion where we do remove just ISMA. And you said the U.S. Conference of Mayors? Or no? Oh, no, just remove ISMA for this.
And I'm sorry, Clarif, because I thought you said you were not attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Again, I do attend, but next, this coming one, winter session, I'm not attending. So it's, again, being mindful of budget. I do defer, or some conferences I don't attend, just because I'm being mindful of the budget, just as you understand. But I think these are important conferences. When the time is right and we're budgetly okay and stable, I would go. Sorry, because I'm not clear. So you're not attending the 2026 U.S. Mayor's Conference? For the winter session. Okay, so can we take that off? Why would you take that? Because this is the ongoing. This is a preapproval for, yeah, for this fiscal year. Yep, but there's a conference, the annual U.S. Conference of Mayors in June.
So you are going.
That one I would go. I'm not gonna go to the winter or the session, which is in January in DC. I did attend that last year. But in June, there is a conference, which is in Long Beach, it's local, it's not too far, so the expense should not be as significant. Oh, no, and I think that's definitely appropriate. We would definitely want to be represented. But you had just mentioned you weren't going, so. Well, I meant, I am not going to the winter session in January in DC. That happens every year in DC. I am not attending that. Okay, awesome. All right, well, I am definitely happy with amending my motion, and I appreciate Councilmember Ortiz. So, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll second your motion.
Madam City, yes, Councilmember Charette? Can we just, Madam City Clerk, can you repeat the motion?
The motion was made by Councilmember Canas to remove the International City County Management Association from the list and approve the balance.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
I just want to note that, just in case the mayor is invited to something, though, she could bring that back to us, like, if she, like, she got that special invite last time, right? We're still amenable to being open if we do get something, or any of us are invited.
This is just for the preapproval.
Just for the preapproval. Okay, all right, thank you so much.
And I would just like to note, because these conferences can get pretty pricey. Again, I just think we all need to think about what we can tighten and forego. I completely agree with the representation, but when we don't even have an Economic Development Director, I don't know what representation we are really trying to, you know, make other people see, when we can't even feel staffed. So just be cognizant of that, just because we want to be at the table, but we're at the table doing what? We have to be cognizant of that. We can't just keep on going things for photo ops. That's just my opinion. Especially, we do now have a permanent city manager. A lot of these things, he can't attend with city staff. We don't necessarily need to be there.
Thank you, Councilwoman. No, ICMA, City Manager, County. Councilmember, can you put, turn on the mic, please?
ICSC.
No, that will remain.
That one's remaining.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm waiting for a vote from Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Charette, and Councilmember Canas. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Moving on to discussion items. Item 16, adopt resolution imposing liens on certain real property to recover costs for code enforcement abatements. Could we begin with staff's presentation?
I move to approve.
Councilmember Ortiz, there's a motion. There's a second by Councilmember Charette. Any other further, if there's no issues, please go ahead and vote digitally. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Moving on to items to be considered for future meetings. Item 17, discuss the selection of city council members to the Bridge Committee, a partnership established between the city and the San Bernardino City Unified School District focused on improving student outcomes by fostering collaboration between schools, families, and community partners, and re-establishing the city's Youth Civic Engagement Council. Councilmember, there's a motion, there's a second.
And I would just like to add, thank you for bringing this, Councilmember Ortiz. I know we're actually listed in the school district strategic plan, so it's really important that we bridge even beyond the youth council and the Bridge Committee, that we do kind of expand that partnership. And I know we've talked about it previously with not just our school district, but the other agencies too. So thank you for bringing this forth.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Ortiz.
Councilmember Flores, your vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, council. We're moving on to mayor city council updates. Councilmember Canas, do you have any announcements or updates to provide?
I know one of our public commentators, Mr. James Malcolm Smith, had mentioned it, but I just wanted to reiterate, because it is sometimes overlooked a little too often, the risk that our officers take day in and day out to protect us. I know they just had the funeral for Officer Andrew Nunez just yesterday. So I just want to give a huge thank you to all of the men and women who self-sacrifice and serve, not just for our city, but all of our surrounding jurisdictions, including our county sheriffs, and give a huge thank you to them. Also, I just want to reiterate to our Parks and Rec staff for the Veterans Event. I understand it was changed. I understand the reasons. I do think our Parks and Rec director and our team did a fabulous job, and I want to thank you. I also want to give another thank you for our veteran here on the council, Councilwoman Fred Charette. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
I don't really have any community events to announce that haven't already been announced, so I'll just tout the wonderful work that our library, our main librarian, our main library does. I have the Libby app, and the city has a huge, a massive catalog of digital books that you can check out without even having to leave home. So I encourage everyone out there to use this beautiful resource that the city pays for, to be at the disposal of anyone who's a resident in the city of San Bernardino. I've been able to read a couple of books lately that have kind of expanded my horizons and improved my way of thinking of things. So I encourage everyone out there to get a library card, download the digital library catalog app, it's called Libby, and you can download, again, a bunch of very interesting books to pass the time and expand your mind. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I attended the, oh, I attended the ribbon cuttings for Zendaya's in Arbour with the mayor, and really appreciated that, and Councilmember Sanchez and Charette. Just great to see the local small businesses opening. So while you are shopping the day after Thanksgiving, you can definitely get something great to eat or something, you know, adult beverage to drink, and it's just a great, a great thing to see. In the 7th ward, if you want to start early, go to DJ's, and if you want a great way to end your night, go to Lamp lighter. And so those are my small business shout-outs. Please make sure that you're doing the 210 Waterman Corridor survey. I'll make sure that I share that on my Facebook, my Instagram. For any other elected officials, I hope you are able to. I think it's really great for us to be able to have that opportunity. I want to wish everybody a super happy Thanksgiving next week. I hope that you guys have great conversations and a great time with your family. And then in our ward, the Sanchez family unfortunately lost a great member of their family, their brother, their uncle, and their brother-in-law, Jesus P. Rios. And so I'd like to just be able to close out tonight's meeting in his honor. He was a really, really great guy. Came to San Bernardino, was always good to his neighbors, and it was unexpected. And so my thoughts and prayers are with their family, and just ask that God bless them during this time. I know it's not easy for anybody. Same thing with our sheriff's family as well. The holidays can be the hardest and the most joyous moments, and so everybody in San Bernardino, I just know that we are this very unique family in our city, and so well wishes to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. 'Tis the season of giving thanks, and I want to give a huge thanks to our city staffs, all the city departments, all the incredible work that you guys do day in and day out. The work, just know the work does not go unnoticed. So thank you from that. Upcoming events, so Turkey Trot at Cal State University of San Bernardino this Saturday. If you haven't signed up, if registration is still open, I encourage you guys to sign up, so you don't feel guilty after that Thanksgiving dinner, or leading into it. CAPEX, California Community Action Partnership, San Bernardino County, in conjunction with Young Visionaries, will be doing a turkey giveaway at San Bernardino Valley College this Saturday. Also, Arrowhead United Way will be also doing a turkey giveaway this Saturday, and Angel Babies 21st Annual Turkey Jam and Food Drive at Teamsters Local 1932 this upcoming Saturday, this upcoming Saturday, for all those families out there that can use a little support. On Monday, November 24th, over on the West Side Community Hospital, will be doing their annual Thanksgiving turkey giveaway from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And also, the Ho Ho Parade will be kicking off on the west side. So it'll be kicking off at the San Bernardino train station about 6:00 p.m., and it will be ending at Nunez Park, so December 8th. So encourage all of the West Side residents to come out and show some love and support. And if some of you haven't noticed, I've been growing out my facial hair, so this is for, to bring awareness, No Shave November. So this is to bring awareness to cancer, particularly immense cancer, which has to do with prostate and testicular cancer. But over the end, I want to give thanks to my colleagues. I hope the city, you guys have a wonderful Thanksgiving with your family, friends, and friends, and loved ones, and we'll see you guys in December.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilwoman Charette?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, thanks to all of our veterans for the service past, present, and future. We did honor our veterans on that Saturday before Veterans Day, and I'm not exactly sure of the dynamics and why it wasn't done on Veterans Day. I tend to agree that that is the day to do it, but it was a great ceremony done by our Parks and Rec Department, and I was happy to be a part of it. And again, thanks to the service to all of our veterans, past, present, and future. I attended a 10-year anniversary, along with the mayor and my colleague Sanchez, for the 10th anniversary of the Garcia Arts Center up on East Street. Great organization that's working hard and bringing the arts to our community, working hard to do that. Yesterday, I started in the morning with a coffee with a cop for the 4th, well, not the 4th district, but the Northeast District, which takes in most of the 4th Ward. And I ended last night at Belvedere Neighborhood Association meeting that they had for their neighborhood up in the Belvedere area. And then also, I want to announce, and I will be announcing it one more time in December, but on December 10th at 6:00 p.m., the Empire Wind Ensemble will be performing a concert at Indian Springs Auditorium at Indian Hills High School. The concert is free to the public, and I was asked to make that announcement and encourage, as many of you that can get there, it's going to include students, and it should be a nice free concert at the Indian Springs Auditorium at Indian Springs High School, 6:00 p.m. on the 10th of December. And then again, like all my colleagues, I'm wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I too am thankful for our staff and for all the people that do the hard work here. I appreciate it, and thank you all, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay, some updates on my end. On November 6th, I attended the SCAG, which is Southern California Association of Government, Community Economic and Human Development Committee, as well as the Regional Council Meeting. On November 7th, I had the privilege of attending the grand opening of a local small business, which our city manager had highlighted, the Elite Complete, Competitive Training located at 1936 Southeast Street. Great place for our youths to go, so if you haven't checked it out, please do check it out. On November 8th, I attended the, with my colleagues, Zendaya's Tacos and Arbour Grand Openings. Both family-run businesses. Amazing, amazing. You could see generation to generation, they are really passing down to their younger generations to continue their business. A beautiful small business. Please check it out. On November 12th, I attended the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority General Policy Committee meeting and visit the Future Green Leader Summit that was here in downtown, hosted over 500 middle school students to provide them with resources to careers and technologies in sustainability and energy efficiency. Just want to give a shout-out to Seoul Cal Ren. They hosted their 3rd annual here, which was amazing. A lot of excited future leaders. On November 13th, I attended the San Bernardino County Transportation Metro Valley Study Session, as well as the 6th Annual Waterman Business Community Meeting, and the DAV Chapter 12 Annual Turkey Giveaway to our veterans in our, in our community. On November 14th, I had the honor of attending the Garcia Center along with my colleagues, celebrating the 10-year anniversary. Just want to give a shout-out to Adadi Garcia, who was honored as that night, and the Garcia family for really pouring into that center for their arts and cultures and keeping it alive. I, on the, on the 15th, I stopped by the Sahabi Initiative, Sahaba Initiative. If you don't know, this is located at 1694 North D Street. They provide free groceries and produce and food to families in the city of San Bernardino, hundreds of families. If you know families who are in need, please have them go there every Saturday morning. Amazing, amazing, amazing. On, on Sunday, the 19th, I attended the Highlander's Boxing Club. Shout-out to Tony Sa Fuentez. Oh my goodness, I met a 10-year-old girl. Her name is, her AKA is Sharky, and she won. 10 years old. Very, very humble, and I just want to give her a shout-out. Congratulations, Sharky, for winning your match. Want to take a moment to thank all the community partners who have stepped up this holiday season to provide groceries and warm meals to our community. Your contributions go far beyond food. You are offering dignity, compassion, and reassurance to families who need it most. In a season defined by giving, you've shown what is possible when we come together to lift one another up. San Bernardino is stronger because of you, and I know there's several many events coming up that will be serving to our community. Before we close today's meeting, would like to honor the memory of Ms. Rowena, Rowena Ramos, beloved elder of the UHA Viatam of the San Manuel Nation. Rowena was a tribal leader, cultural bearer, and devoted community advocate whose generosity touched countless lives. She supported organizations across our region, including Loma Linda Children's Hospital, the Boys and Girls Club, the Sheriff's Employee Benefits Association, children's charities, the Unforgettable Foundation, YMCA, Santa Claus Incorporated, and the Time for Change Foundation. Her impact was so meaningful that the Unforgettable Foundation created the Rowena Award in her name, recognizing grandmothers who inspire others through selfless giving. Rowena was also deeply connected to her culture. Many of us had the privilege of seeing her bird dancing and singing the songs passed down through her family, traditions she preserved with love and pride for future generations. We remember Ms. Ramos for her strength, generosity, and dedication to community. On behalf of the city of San Bernardino, we extend our heartfelt condolences to the UHA Viatam of the San Manuel Nation and to her family. At this time, I also want to, at this time, I ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence as we honor the life, legacy, and enduring contributions of Ms. Rowena Ramos, as well as Jesus Rios, Councilwoman Ortiz has just mentioned. Please take a moment of silence.
Meeting is now adjourned, everyone, at 6:29 p.m. Happy Thanksgiving. The next joint regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council, and the Mayor and City Council Acting as the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, and the Mayor and City Council Acting as the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and Mayor and City Council of the city of San Bernardino, Acting as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority, will join to the regular meeting to be held on December 3rd, 2025, at the Feltime Central Library located at 555 West Sixth Street, San Bernardino, California 92410. Closed session will begin at 4:00 p.m., and open session will begin at 5:00 p.m.